Yet, uh, the project will have more cost certain in the next two to three months. Um, as expenses and bid results for the first um thirty-two percent of the project will be awarded in March, and at that time, the town owner, project manager, Leftfield, will prepare an updated cost estimate and present it to the board of selectmen and the school committee, as well as the middle school building committee at that time. On January eighteenth, the town manager participated in the second of three library strategic planning meetings, and the committee is currently working to identify and define a community vision statement. Also on January eighteenth, the open space committee and conservation commission held a public meeting to discuss the formation of a Tingsboro land trust. Um, they're looking to hold hold a second meeting uh in March. They do have enough volunteers currently to uh officially form the land trust, but they want to see if they can um gather a few more before making that, you know, first big step. So they're going to hold one more meeting. Uh, they're going to advertise a neighbor to neighbor and um uh again on social media and a few other avenues to try and get some more um some more input and volunteers. And I do want to note in your packet and also posted online is the library's quarterly report. Um, so they have a few lot highlights in here. I'm not going to read through all of these. You'll see their strategic first strategic planning meeting that they've relaunched their monthly newsletter. Um, good to note they've held sixty programs in the last three months and had over a thousand attendees. Um, and then you'll see some of their goals here for the next quarter, um, which involve working to wrap up the strategic plan, uh, hiring the assistant director, uh, which they just completed last week, um, finalizing their budget submission, um, and a few other items here. So I won't go through all of them, but it's in the board's packet and residents can do that online. And then
Um, any questions uh for the town manager? Just go forth and just ask the question. Seeing none, uh, Mr. Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. On January eleventh, we opened bids for the Madeline Terrace Drainage Improvements Project. The lowest bid came in at ninety-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars from JP Woodall. Town manager Hanson has awarded a contract to them for the work. We received thirteen qualified bids this round, and Woodall Construction has done one other drainage project in Tingsborough to the satisfaction of the engineering department. You may remember that we opened bids originally in the fall, but the um the pricing was higher than we expected and and the lowest bid fell through. So we went back out to bid. This one was lower, and it's also roughly twenty thousand dollars under budget. So we expect that the project will commence in late March. Also, on the eleventh, we opened bids for the Littlefield Library Project. This is a project that involves a forty thousand dollar grant from Mass Historic and a forty thousand dollar match from CPC. There were two contracts. The first is for the slate roof replacement on the rear side of the building. That one was awarded by Mr. Hanson to Almar LLC for seventy-seven thousand dollars. We're currently reviewing bids for the door portion of the project. Um, as this is a state partially funded grant, they have to review the qualifications of all the firms that we award a contract to. And the low bidder for the door portion of the project couldn't show enough work on historic buildings to get that approval from the state. So we're reviewing the qualifications of the second lowest bidder. We were able to secure an additional six thousand dollars from the Mass Historic Commission because the door wasn't originally included in our grant application, but the state had extra funding this year. Um, so that was something that they wanted us to move forward with. And we expect the work for that project will commence in March and must be completed by June first. It will be supervised by Building Conservation Associates, which manage the front part of uh the Littlefield Library. Also in procurement, we're working with the planning board to solicit competitive RFPs for peer review services to allow the town to ensure that it's receiving competitive rates and that we have a standard contract with terms that are favorable to the town. RFP documents will be available on January thirtieth and due by ten AM on February twenty-seventh. The proposals will be reviewed by the planning department and the planning board, and a contract will be awarded for work to commence on July first. The planning board currently uses KNA and is happy with them, but we haven't competitively procured their services in a few years, so this is one way to make sure that we get the best value for the town.
Any questions for our assistant town manager? Seeing none, uh, let's go into a new business. Uh, request for host community agreement for marijuana delivery on a room. Uh, Mr. Assistant Town Manager, I believe you're going to take this one.
Absolutely, I'm currently promoting Michael and Tara from Bada Vroom and Bada Bloom. I'll probably mix those two up as we go. Um, including your packet is a draft host community agreement that has been reviewed by town council and the applicant. Um, just prior to the meeting, I was mentioned that we likely want to find language that's amenable to the town as well as to the applicants relative to the impact fee. As this board knows, the impact fee laws changed. We have sent correspondence to the legislature regarding those changes. And so uh it was suggested before the meeting that we work with our council and with the applicants to find some sort of language that would address if the law changed back to the way it was when we first granted HEAs. But as this document stands now, it matches the current law. So if the board is amenable to granting this, we will look for there to be contingent on adding some language amenable to town council and the applicants. This is the first that um they're hearing of it, so I'll I'll speak with them more in detail about it tomorrow. But they have a current HEA for forty-four Old Ting Road under Bada Bloom. Um, they are now looking to do delivery and including your packet was also their business plan. And um they did submit a very detailed security plan, which has been reviewed by the police department. Chief Howden noted that they had no additional concerns. Uh, at this point, it's probably appropriate for me to let Tara and Michael introduce themselves to the board and tell them a little bit more about what they're looking to do.
Thank you, Colin. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Tara Hopper. I'm a general counsel for Bada Bloom INC., which has a cultivation and product manufacturing at forty-four Old Ting Road. We're looking to expand with a delivery operator license um at the same building so we can essentially um just deliver products for people would sign on um do orders um through the internet, through e-commerce platform. And then we could have all of those orders. We would have a vault, and then we would just whoever ordered it, we would deliver it directly to their home. Um, Michael Yeah. is the CEO is a and of Bada Bloom, I'll let him speak.
Hi, my name is Michael Marinaro. Um, I'm the CEO of Bada Bloom and also Bada Vroom. And um as Tara said, we are just seeking a delivery operator license out of our same location that we currently hold those provisional licenses for. Um, you know, we have designed this building for uh the security uh for delivery as well. Um, it is very secure, um, you know, in between where our vault will be and also where our storage for our bands will be that will be leaving the facility. Um, and and we uh we really appreciate you guys uh having us tonight, and we'd like to know if the board has any additional questions uh about our operation.
Yes, and just so you know, um, before I started with Bada Bloom, I was working for some very large operators throughout the country. Um, I've done many different inspections with the Cannabis Control Commission for various places in Massachusetts and across the country. So if you have any questions about the specifics, I'm happy to answer them for you, and I very much value your time, and thank you for listening to us this evening.
Oh, thank you. All right, just just to add a couple of comments. So when you got the initial uh host agreement for cultivation, uh, you you did mention that you were probably going to come back uh with with this request. Uh, so 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 now we're here uh at this point. And just to double and triple check, uh, Colin or Matt, uh, you know, this meets uh our 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 land use and the marijuana legislation, our marijuana bylaws uh that we passed at a town meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll go around and see if anybody uh has any particular questions. Uh, Slukman Winstrom.
Thank you. Um, so where it's an online platform, and I would assume you're you mentioned doing, you know, you would order and payment. How does that work considering a lot of credit card companies won't allow um the processing of cannabis funds on a credit card?
Right, well, they'd be a pre-order. It is very much how they do, like when they had to do curbside. You pay once you get there, but you put in your driver's license and you put in your information, and your driver's license has to match the address as to where you're going. That's in the regulation. So once you get there, then you would have, um, it would go through like a
A card machine.
Yeah, a card machine like Dutchie.
Yeah, I believe there actually is platforms now as well that you can use your debit card um right in the e-commerce site as well. So you can use either or with some of the newer platforms that they have.
And frankly, we've met with a lot of different vendors who do that. We're going to have to hire someone to do that piece because that's outside my my realm. But um as far as the standard operating procedures and the meeting, the requirements with the Cannabis Control Commission, um, we know that the way that we're doing this meets that criteria. Otherwise, we would not get approved by the commission when they inspect us.
Great, thank you. And then will the scanning of um one delivery is received at the home? Will it be similar to, um, you know, if someone's having alcohol delivered where they'll be required to scan the license front and back and will that identity verified?
Frankly, I wish it was as easy as alcohol. We have to have body cameras on us. We have to do this whole thing. We have to have two people in the car. We have to have body cameras. It's going to be a a big order. It's it's not going to be as easy as alcohol.
And to answer your question yesterday, the ID does have to be scanned, and it can only be delivered to someone who that ID is issued to, whoever makes that purchase online.
Correct. I mean, I guess I was just making sure that, you know, you're the proper scanning of IDs and things like that. And so and that has to match the order, correct?
Absolutely.
Whoever orders it has to be the one that takes receipt of it, even if the person that you're receiving it to would be of legal age to purchase.
It actually can only be delivered to their license uh address that is on that license as well. So you cannot have anything delivered to anywhere other than your ID on your address that is printed on that.
And yes, to answer your question, though, only to that person, and that will be on camera. So there's no way to go around that.
Thank you, those were the only questions I had at this time.
Uh, Slukman Moran, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Slukman Eldridge?
No, I I appreciate the uh the detail in the in the business plan and talking about the manifests and the security around that. Those were my main concerns, and it it seems like not only do you have a um a well-regulated industry, there's a lot of things that are there. Um, it looks like there are quite a few items on here that you're doing that are beyond what is required as well. So I I appreciate the level of detail that that's here. So thank you for providing that.
Slukman Kalbokas?
I agree and have no additional questions.
Um, I have no further questions either. Um, can I have a motion uh and and Slukman Kalbokas, uh, as as Colin said, make contingent upon uh, or we want to put something else into the host agreement? If if the marijuana laws change, then we can uh, you know, look at that also.
Okay. Um, I move that the select board approve a host community agreement with Bada Vroom LLC at forty-four Old Ting Road, Building Three. Um, as presented with contingencies upon if the host agreements change, that there might be some additional changes that need to be made and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote, Slukman Winstrom.
In favor.
Slukman Moran.
In favor.
Slukman Eldridge.
In favor.
Slukman Kalbokas.
In favor.
I am also in favor. That passes by zero zero. Uh, thank you very much to Bada Vroom.
I'm very grateful and appreciative of your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, next on the agenda, review draft MBTA communities action plan.
Eric Solano, our town planner and economic developer, who's just been promoted here. So we'll give him a minute to come on and test his microphone. Good evening, Eric. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, if I could turn it over to Eric to introduce and um walk us through the draft action plan. Um, the goal tonight is to present the draft action plan to you and get your feedback. Uh, if any, so Eric, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for um preparing this for us on behalf of the town.
Thanks, Matt. So uh inside your packet, uh, as Matt mentioned, you have a draft of the action plan for MBTA communities for the town of Tingsboro. Uh, this was prepared in conjunction with the assistance from NIMCOG. Uh, the document itself is essentially going to be copied and pasted into a form that the state makes available online. I believe I mentioned up at the top of the document where that link is, if anybody wanted to see exactly how that uh form works. Um, essentially, the first several sections are formalities, uh, asking uh who's filling out the form. Um, I I guess acknowledging what type of housing community Tingsboro is with regards to the MBTA communities legislation. And in section two, uh, we went through the housing production plan and the master plan to pull out uh components, including specific goals uh in order to help support the formation of a district that will be compliant with the MBTA communities, um, which as a reminder, is to create a fifty-acre district. It doesn't have to be one hundred percent contiguous. Um, that would allow multifamily housing at a density of fifteen units per acre um with a capacity of up to seven hundred and fifty units um by right. The action plan, when it gets submitted to the state, is simply there to to show and um demonstrate progress uh towards the community's consideration of amendments to meet that legislation. Um, the town, once they finally, once we finally draft amendments to the zoning bylaw, uh, to present to town meeting, that would still require um passage at town meeting in order for the town to become compliant with the bylaw. Um, as we move through some of the sections, through uh housing production plan, master plan components in quotes, um, we get to some components where we've included some messaging that's on a regional basis, including the Greater Lowell Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDS, um, the two thousand and eleven Regional Strategic Plan for Greater Lowell. They all have some components related to housing. In section three, preliminary zoning strategies, um, I went through and tried to identify uh specific components of the zoning bylaw that are related to multifamily, um, provide some commentary about those elements as well as identifying sections or neighborhoods of town, including their zoning and perhaps their geographic identities in order to, I guess, prepare the state for what areas the town will likely be considering um for including in their zoning district. Some of those that have been identified, um, I refer to as the Northern Retail Corridor. That's a section of Middlesex Road, essentially from Bryant Lane North. Um, the B two Business District, which is the town center, um, that essentially had to be in, well, I thought it would be prudent for it to be included since um the the purpose behind the MBTA communities bylaw is to increase um populations at town centers and areas of commerce. Included the Westford Road Mixed Use Corridor, um, where the mixed use overlay district currently is covered. And uh the remaining items include some specific characteristics associated with either the uh community itself, the master plan goals, essentially a summary of what was included, um, as well as some elements related to um traffic and um transportation. So those cover sections three point two, all the way through the end of section four. Some of the transportation elements that we mentioned include, you know, some, I don't want to say pie in the sky, but some long-term projects, things that the community's been talking about for potentially decades. Um, a Route Three exit on the southbound uh for Exit Ninety-One, um, an extension of the commuter rail from Lowell to North Chelmsford and up to Nashua. Um, ex by NIMCOG is currently working on expanding year-round bus service up Middlesex Road in Tingsboro. So they've mentioned that. Um, and the Capitol Corridor uh rail project that would run extends rail service from uh Massachusetts all the way up to Concord. Section four talks about the action uh plan timeline. Some components uh that are included are public outreach, developing the zoning language itself, applying DHCD's compliance model to test for density and unit capacity. And I can give a little bit of a brief explanation of that. The state um released uh a GIS tool combined with some spreadsheets that are aimed towards allowing, providing communities with enough information to test their district boundaries for compliance. And NIMCOG is going to be providing Tingsboro with assistance on the GIS um side. Uh, we'll be holding planning board meetings, of course, related to any zoning amendments, um, holding legislative sessions to adopt that compliant zoning and ultimately submitting district compliance applications to DHCD um if the town ultimately passes zoning amendments. The timeline is inside the table on the last page, as you see on your screen. Um, and our next steps are going to be working with NIMCOG to develop scenarios and report on those scenarios, um, which would be due in May. So I'll be working with Jennifer Rate and some of her team over at NIMCOG uh to work out some materials for the town to start uh taking into consideration. Be happy to answer any other questions uh about the process and the progress that has been made.
Uh, Slukman Eldridge, you just unmuted.
Just being prepared, um, Eric, so you're working with NIMCOG on this. Do you have the the resources, particularly in the early part of this, between now and May, to, you know, to get this done? And is there any impact on other projects you might be working on?
Um, I'm not anticipating that since uh we've worked out an agreement and a contract with NIMCOG through DLTA funding. We've also um secured additional funds um to ensure that we do have resources available through MHP. So I believe the DLTA funding contract is ten thousand, and we received an additional twenty thousand dollars in technical assistance that's available to the town uh through MHP. Um, the scenario development and the reports on those scenarios, the first drafts of those are due to be developed by NIMCOG themselves. So I'd be providing sort of a an editing and oversight uh role for that, and I don't think it's going to negatively impact our existing um projects.
Thank you. No no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, E- Eric, so you're working on this with NIMCOG. Are you also working with the uh the the zoning board on 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 this also?
Um, we, I'm sorry. Sure, the zoning review committee is focused on several other topics um to address within the zoning bylaw. And because the town has resources to specifically address multifamily and housing-related um elements of the zoning bylaw, uh, I'm sort of treating those uh separate and parallel. However, uh, there's going to be crossover communication. So we're going to have members of NIMCOG participate in the zoning review committee meetings to present um the draft language that they develop, present the scenarios in May. Um, that way, the zoning review committee will not uh be necessarily distracted through the by the effort that's required to make these types of um developments, and they can focus on the components of the zoning bylaw that they've identified in their previous meeting.
And when is the next time uh uh the select board will get an update uh on this? Or when do you feel would be appropriate the next time we get an update on?
Sure, for this specific topic, I would anticipate an update in May.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Slukman Winstrom, any questions?
None at this time.
Slukman Moran.
Uh, not right now.
Uh, Slukman Kalbokas.
No questions. Thank you very much, Eric.
Sure.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, and I have uh no further questions uh at this time either.
Very good. It will be submitted to the state on time or actually early. It's due on the thirty-first. I'll get that submitted as soon as I get back to the office.
Okay, thank you very much for uh attending tonight, Eric.
Thanks, have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
Next on the agenda, uh, budget discussions, uh, IT department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just going to give us a minute to promote Tom Flamm, our IT director, into the meeting. And we'll check his audio. Uh, his budget request this year, um, the main request that we're going to be talking about is the support specialist position, which we're able to get into the budget um as a part-time position last year. Um, but great success with that position. Um, and whether it's this year or in the future, um, Tom would like to um expand the role of that position. And he could talk about any of the other line items that the board would like to discuss as well. And it looks like he's coming on right now.
Good evening, thank you for having me today.
Hey, Tom, the floor is yours.
Uh, so uh I kind of got the got a little cut off of what Matt was uh introducing there. But yeah, there, this budget does represent some additional um risk management, basically. Um, the big changes are, or the big asks, I guess, are, um, like Matt said, bring the our current part-time uh support specialist up to thirty-five hour a week full-time uh as a joint position with media. So media would be uh contributing about ten thousand dollars towards that. Uh, so it would cover a need for both departments. Uh, our current support specialist has a background in media. Uh, so we feel that the uh that would create a nice dovetail between the two related departments. Uh, the other big increase change is um around our antivirus. And I'm looking at going to a managed threat response system um solution where we have twenty-four seven monitoring through our antivirus provider. They will respond to any suspicious activity uh on our network and either, depending on how we have it set up for agreement, uh, to either just take care of the problem completely and then notify myself that uh they've had an issue and dealt with it, or uh they will, you know, isolate that issue, notify me and allow me to um kind of direct how how to proceed. This is uh something that we've been asked on the uh cyber insurance um application the past couple of years, and it does feel like that is something that's going to be required going forward. So um as a colleague of mine put it, it is going to be a little bit of a cash versus risk um discussion when it comes to the um managed threat response on on uh cyber insurance. A couple of the other big changes in the the positive for us is with the work of the finance department, we are getting ready to uh completely end support on the legacy financial systems. So that is a savings of about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, so there are, there is kind of offsets to some of the asks that I have for this year. Uh, that's the the really high-level overview. Uh, I'd be open to specific questions or if you want any more detail.
Okay, uh, any questions for Tom, uh, Slukman Winstrom?
None at this time, thank you.
Slukman Moran.
I don't have any right now, thank you very much.
Questions, Slukman Eldridge?
Yeah, Tom, uh, which managed threat response service are we going with on this?
So as it stands right now, we uh utilize Sophos. So we would be utilizing their uh advanced services. Uh, but that is something that we could certainly look at going forward.
Yeah, I mean, they're they're good. I was just curious as to which one. There there's a variety of them that are out there. Um, where where are we on the uh the vulnerability assessment? And whether any of that has indicated that this is, you know, now's the right time for this? And whether there's additional items that might come out of that?
Yes, thanks for asking that. Uh, we have gotten the initial report back on the town side. Um, they found some critical things that we need to address, and they're mostly uh around uh software patching and uh and things like that. So uh that is going to be, we're going to start attacking that immediately uh as critical. You know, we'll we'll triage and we'll deal with the critical right away, and then um, you know, we'll work through it. But uh there was nothing that I would say was um such a big surprise that uh we need to jump on getting, you know, additional services in. Just as a a little bit of a support for increasing to full-time on the support specialist. I did have an incident this past week where one of our uh legacy financial systems actually went down, and I was focused on that for the entire day. That can happen at any time, and then we can have another critical issue happen in another department. Um, you know, right now I have nineteen hours a week with um with David, our current support specialist, uh, and he's been very willing to learn. And And he's been very willing to learn and eager to learn. And, you know, I'd, I'd really like to empower him more. And, you know, have the ability to deal with and a secondary issue on a given day.
Which leads me, I guess that dovetails into my next question, which is so that the technician is going to go from 19 to 35 hours. That's with benefits and all of that, I assume?
Yeah, you know, we can't ask that question if, if he would take the, the benefits. But yes, you know, having factored that in, that is part of that discussion.
Yeah, it's an eligible position at that point.
Right. Yeah. What, once we cross that threshold to 20 hours, we're eligible. So, you know, it was with recognition of that fact. But again, I think it's, it is a little bit of a cash versus risk. Issue, especially, you know, as it stands right now, when I'm on vacation, when I take sick days, I'm still answering calls, answering emails. And that is really not sustainable as I quite honestly go on vacations that I'm not accessible on, so.
And I know that that's been part of the, the plan over the last couple of years, at least from what I'm familiar with. That, you know, this has been on the radar. It's not, it's not like we only wanted that to be it. We knew that at some point this was going to be there because as we have more and more systems that are driven by this. You know, the, the costs and the complexity of some of these things i- is much higher than it was before.
Yes, Selectman Eldridge, our former IT director, Jason Boulder, when he previously worked in Groddin, he grew that to a three-person department. It started as a one-person department, I think back in 2011. And by 2015, he had two, we had two full-time folks working on him, one for more support. And I think one for, God, it's, it's been a while. I can't remember now. And his plan, if he, if he hadn't taken the Conquer job, was to, to sort of make these same requests. Start with a part-timer and, and he had plans to make it full-time and hopefully even bring in another person after that. He was cognizant that that would happen in here. And, you know, Tom, when he came in, we had, that was one of our first discussions as well. And we said we would work on a, a part-timer and thankfully the board did fund that the first year. You know, we, we obviously don't have all the budget requests in front of the board right now. And we don't have all of our revenue and expenses. So we're not looking for the board to make, you know, any decisions tonight or compare this against any other needs. But, you know, come March, we'll, we'll definitely have that discussion about how this increase would compare to some of the other priorities in town.
Great. Yeah, no, no other questions. I mean, everything, it, it makes sense. I know the managed threat, so I, I've done that in multiple places. It is becoming more standard and it is cost-effective. And it is 24 by seven. It is one of those things that, you know, the, the challenge is that oftentimes issues happen after hours. And it, the more you can mitigate that risk immediately, if there is some sort of event that happens. It, it does, it does make things easier. It doesn't absolve the, you know, we're never going to be risk-free, but it does make it easier to deal with.
Yeah. And to that point, I'd love to say that I can schedule all outages or all issues, but that is certainly never going to happen. And we do have departments that are 24/7. So that, that was known when I accepted this position that it was a 24/7 position. But, you know, being realistic, it is not sustainable that way. So I thank you for those questions.
No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Matt?
Sure. I just want to know Tom was kind enough to give the finance department a plug for helping to see financial conversions and get rid of mu-. Point and software and get those products and capture the budget for fiscal '24. But Tom didn't give himself credit and I did, I know for Tom and the finance department. We wouldn't have been able to get that done. So Tom, it's a lot of credit as well.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, Tom, great job on that. And, you know, it's one of the most difficult transitions there is. And even in the private industry, municipal government is, is the financial system. And it's been a very long project as, as they all are. And you probably can see the finish line and getting pretty close. You know, we're doing okay. We've got the financials and I know there's many more modules also that we would like to get in there. So we do appreciate all the hard work that you did, your assistant, and actually a lot of other people at Town Hall. Because everybody has to be, has a piece of it or has to input into this. So we appreciate all the hard work. Any other questions from the board for Tom? Hey, Tom, you know, as I said, you're the, the first one to present your budget request and we have a long process ahead of us. And we will be going through that, but I, we, we do appreciate you giving us your requirements of what you need to run the department.
Thank you. And I'll just close with acknowledging the fact that I know every request is reasonable within a vacuum and that we do not operate in that vacuum. So I do appreciate your consideration of my requests.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, Board of Health Trash and Recycling, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just wait a moment while we promote Kerry, our Health Director. Here on now. Just want to make sure Kerry, can you see and hear us okay?
Hi, good evening. Yes, I can see you and hear you okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Kerry.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for having me. So I'm here to present the Board of Health budget and the trash and recycling budget. So for the health budget, we are pretty much asking for level funding. The biggest increase is in trash and recycling budget and in wages and salaries. The increase in rubbish and recycling cotton tracks, it is ending June 30th. So with Republic Services, our Town Manager, Matt Hanson, has been in negotiation with a couple of waste haulers. So we, for our budget, we are asking, well, it's going to increase from 1, 1,090,000 to 1.3. And that is due to the new increases in the new contracts and also in the new tipping fee. And then we also asking for an increase in the household hazardous waste collection. We ask one additional 2,000, going up from 15,000 to 17,000. And that also, the prices has increased as well.
Hey, look, looking at this budget, you know, when we're looking at the, you know, I see the rubbish contract in 2021. And you have recycling contract in 2021 of 269,000. And then in 2022, 2023, in your request, there's no recycling contract. Can you kind of go through that with me?
Yeah, so it's just combined instead of breaking it up into a rubbish and a recycling contract. It's just becomes a, it just combined into like a trash and recycling contract. So the number just added up to one line instead of being separated into lines.
Okay, that's what it seemed like. It's one to verify. Okay, I'll ask the board members if they have any questions for you. Selectman Winstrom?
None at this time.
Selectman Moran?
Um, no, thank you.
Selectman Eldridge?
Uh, one question on the hazardous waste. It, it seems like participation is up. So, and I, and if costs are up as well. Yeah. Are we covering it? Or is 17,000 enough? Where were we on actual expenditures and, you know, are we close to some of those items?
So last year with our household hazardous waste day, it comes pretty close to 15,000. So with next year, like you said, with increase in participation and increase. We're hoping that 2,000 more will cover it. If not, we do also have an RDP grant. That may help us offset the increase as well.
Great, thank you. No other questions, Mr. Chair.
Selectman Calabocas?
None at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So for the residents out there, we, we've known for a while that the rubbish contract was going to go significantly up. Our Town Manager gave us an update at our last meeting. He's been whittling away at significant increases and getting that down a little bit. But as, as we've known for a while, it was going to go up significantly. And this is one of the huge increases that we were expecting. And, you know, I, I do believe we'll, we'll be finalizing that contract. Mr. Town Manager, will that be by the next meeting?
Uh, yes, it should be by the next meeting. You know, both of the companies are eager to enter into a long-term agreement. And either, you know, get some repairs in their existing trucks or order some new trucks. They're quite expensive and their repairs are, are very expensive right now. That's one of the reasons for the big cost increase that you're seeing. It's not only wages, but the supply chain and the, the cost of vehicles has obviously hit the, this industry rather hard. You talked about us whittling away at costs. I just put an email in here today from EL Harvey that they're adding one more item to their. Recommendation. So this, this number that we were looking at really didn't include the yard waste pickup. Because both of the companies were trying to get rid of that or find alternatives or put a really high price on it. So this is going to be really the base starting point. Republic would like an additional $60,000 per year to do that. Two days in the spring and two days in the fall. And it didn't, it was not included in EL Harvey's numbers. EL Harvey is willing to put one day back in the spring and the fall for curbside yard waste pickup. Which is approximately a $30,000 cost. But as I briefly discussed at the last meeting, switching to EL Harvey would require the town going to a five-day-per-week pickup. So there'd be essentially one truck in town, doing a portion of the town each day of the week. You know, obviously there are some pros and cons to that. The pros are there's definitely a truck in town the next day if there's a missed pickup. So Kerry and I are, are spending a lot of time trying to dig into the amount of missed pickups we've been having, why they've. Why they've happened and what we can do to improve the service with Republic. We had another call with their sales manager last week to talk to them again. They are looking to guarantee moving forward to pick up in one day from when they receive the call. I think Kerry, Kerry had one conversation with the Board of Health where I think they were probably leaning towards Harvey because of maybe the better customer service that they have. We've had a lot of issues with Republic's call center. When we spoke with Republic last week, I mentioned that we likely would need to add a contract provision for some type of liquidated damages. If they don't pick up a missed pickup within one day, we would need some type of financial penalty. Because we've, it just creates a lot of extra work for our office and for the Board of Health. Sometimes one missed pickup going on for two or three days can lead to, you know, eight different calls and people being transferred. The resident calls the call center and they don't get the response they like, they call us. We call Republic directly and it just goes around and around. So, you know, if the board has any, you know, thoughts or feelings on, you know, your experience with, with Republic? Or your thoughts on going to a five-day-a-week pickup versus the one-day-a-week pickup? Would love to hear that within the next few weeks because we'd like to finalize with, with one company or another. That being said, the, the prices, well, they, they keep both trying to sweeten the pot a little bit. I'd say they're about, about even, if you will. They're about a million dollars each with some minor, you know, some minor variations depending on what you might include. So it's really a service level decision that we're trying to, we're, we're spending a lot of time discussing internally.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody from the board have any further questions for either Kerry or Matt?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, go ahead. Selectman Winstrom?
Question, Matt. On the, when we move to a five-day pickup, how does the holidays work? Whereas now it's, you know, it's delayed a day. So then are they, are they going to then, are they proposing a, a two-day pickup for the Monday holidays? Or, you know, a midweek holiday for the, you know, Christmas and Thanksgiving?
Right. So typically if you're a Friday pickup, they'll pick, they'll pick you up Saturday. So that, or if it's any holiday earlier in the week, everyone gets bumped out a day. So, etc.
So, so I feel like although that's a good option to have, it would create a, probably a lot of confusion in the beginning. We'd have to really make sure that, that messaging, because it, it's not just, so then you're disrupting the whole week, right? You're bumping everyone out a day. And I see a lot of, in the beginning, calls about that kind of change for what people are used to, not saying good or bad. But. That's a thought to consider, how that's going to just drastically impact what people are expecting for service.
Yeah, we think the first year, there probably would be a lot of growing pains if we switch. It'd be, it wouldn't just be a different company. It'd be a whole different schedule. Any other initial thoughts from board members?
Well, what I'll, what I'll just add, you know, you know, thank you Kerry and Matt for working on this. One of the things that I've relayed to Matt is, you know, of course we are a service organization and Republic hasn't lived up to our expectations in the past. And Matt has been working pretty diligently with them and Harvey to try to, you know, as he explained, to increase the service level to the residents, which is, which is very important. So I want to thank you for, for doing that and hopefully you can continue and put some good contract language in there to help the service level agreement moving forward. And with that, Kerry, was there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, that is it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for joining us, sharing with us your, your, your budget. And, you know, we're just starting the budget process, as you know, and, you know, Matt will be working with you diligently on this. Thank you very much, Kerry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Okay, next on the agenda, update discussing zoning bylaw review committee. I believe, Selectman Eldridge, you were going to kick this off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we just had a, a meeting last week. And there were some topics that came up that I think are important. We're at a point where there's some strategic things that I want to make sure that the, the board is aware of. And to get some updated guidance, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the, the bylaws have been, have been organized in such a way so that now we can start making some material changes. And a lot of the changes are consistent with what the master plan committee had identified as needs. What Planning Board and ZBA has, has identified. And there were a few items that we're looking to hit first. And the first one was separating the special permit process from the site plan review process. We're very heavily driven by special permits. We have a lot and we've heard that from, from people. And the recommendation from consultants and what we've heard is that. Site plan review process can actually accomplish many of the same things. With, that a, that we have been using the special permits for to make sure that. uh, with, that a, that we have been using the special permits for, to make sure that, you know, um, certain conditions are put on it, that, uh, there's review and that the, um, you know, the, the character of the town is maintained. And so, um, you know, I, I, I don't have any issues with that. However, the consultants we're talking about, um, there are challenges with having both the select board and the planning board issuing special permits because it can be confusing for, um, you know, the applicants. And, um, it might be that there's inconsistencies between the groups. You know, one group might be easier than another. And, um, you know, their recommendation is that you try to get it, um, to, to one group. I looked at that and said, looking at what we do, that would be a radical change. And, and, um, you know, my personal thinking was that, um, we wouldn't be looking for that. I think that there may be certainly some things that are special permit being granted by the Board of Selectmen that we might want to move to the Planning Board. Um, but not everything. And so, you know, I wanted to see if anybody else had any thoughts on any of that and, and what we do as far as special permits, which ones we grant. And it, it does kind of tie into the last one, which is the table of uses, which is that complex table that says, here's what's special permit, here is what's by right and, and who does that. And that needs a lot of work as well. But I wanted to get a feel for, um, I wasn't under the impression that we were gonna make radical changes to who the granting authorities were for special permits, um, you know, unless they're obvious. You know, there, there could be some obvious things that we sit there and say, yeah, the select board should not be the, the planning board can handle those types of things. So, really wanted to get some, some feedback from the rest of the board members to get, uh, an idea of what anybody else was thinking.
Okay, uh, with that, I guess we'll open it up on that particular topic. Uh, anybody like to, uh, have any questions about that? You know, I, I guess I'll kick it off since nobody jumped in there, um, you know, at this point. You know, I, I do believe from the site planning perspective, uh, having two different groups to that, um, I, I've always wondered why, uh, that, 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 that occurred. Um, you know, seeing how the Planning Board goes about, uh, doing the site planning, uh, and, you know, working with some of the Planning Board members, you know, on the Master Plan Committee. Um, there's, there's so much that goes into that that I never understood until I, you know, I got in this position and, and, uh, I guess I'll say, I still don't know all the things that, that they do. Uh, you know, it, you know, there's so many regulations, there's, there's so much that they do. I would like to see the site planning aspect, uh, be done by the Planning Board. I think having two different organizations doing that, the select board and the planning board, isn't really efficient. I think you just from efficiency aspect, I, I do think that the, uh, Planning Board should be doing, uh, the site planning. As it relates to special permits, I'd have to go through all the special permits that the Planning Board does compared to what we do. I'm not really sure what they are. I'm open to discussing that in a more detailed conversation sometime in the future, but, um, I'm not really sure at this point which special permits, uh, we'd be looking, uh, you know, to allow the planning board to do or, or which one, or vice versa. So, you know, that's one that I'd like to, to look at in further detail. But, you know, as for the site planning, I, I, I do believe that the Planning Board has the expertise, uh, to do that. And, you know, for, from an applicant's aspect, uh, you know, the site planning should be the same, uh, the way that goes about, uh, through, through, uh, through our government structure. Uh, and I believe the Planning Board is probably best positioned to do that.
To, to add to that, expand upon it a little bit. One, one thing that, um, we all agree on is that the site plan review process should be more formalized. Um, there, there are standard areas in a site plan review that we would wanna, um, ensure we're in everything. You know, sometimes there's gonna be certain focus put on a, on a particular area, but, uh, we may not be consistent across all of them. So, uh, one of the things that we would look to do is, is ensure that the site plan review, the information that's gathered, uh, would be consistent across the board. The other thing to add, uh, Mr. Chair, is that even if there were a situation where the granting authority were to be the Board of Selectmen for the special permit, um, we would certainly, uh, be within our rights to have the Planning Board weigh in on their thoughts on the particular application. So it, it, you know, it's one of those things where, um, you know, I, I don't know if I, I, I guess I, we could go through some specific examples of which ones, um. I think what I also heard from you is that it might be good to just say, why don't we look at which ones are changing and see whether we have an issue with it, right? Let's look at ones that are being proposed as being changed because looking at it in an abstract without having something tangible, it's really hard to say.
Right. I would agree. Any other questions from any of the board members? Okay, uh, Salkman Eldridge, you wanna, uh, continue on?
Sure. So, uh, just an update, I guess. Uh, sign regulations is a one that is, um, a hot topic for everybody. We are looking at, um, modernizing and simplifying the, the sign regulations. However, it's a very involved process and I don't anticipate that, um, anything's gonna be ready for annual town meeting. It's, it just needs a, a lot of work and a lot of feedback from, um, a lot of interested parties and the public. And, um, what we, what is likely to be coming up for annual town meeting is something where, uh, we address municipal and school signage. Because that there, there are limitations on that and, and they're looking for guidance, whether it's, um, Notre Dame or Innovation or some of those, um, there, there, there is a challenge that we have that we would look to address immediately. But, um, the sign regulations are gonna be worked on, uh, over a longer period of time and it, it definitely won't be ready for, for a spring, uh, or annual town meeting.
Okay, uh, and as it says on here, sorry, it says it requires a lot of work with public to discuss. So most of this will be, not be part of, it probably should say this annual town meeting. Uh, but of course, it will have to be approved at a future town meeting.
Correct. And not part of, uh, the next annual town meeting.
I'll make sure that was clear to the residents. Okay, uh, any questions, uh, from the board members? Seeing done, uh, continue on, Salkman Eldridge.
So, split zone parcels is an item that, uh, is, uh, so these are, just to remind everybody, split zones, we have uh, property in various places where part of the property falls into one type of, uh, category, whether, let's say, it's industrial versus a business. Um, it, it goes across two. And we don't have anything codified that says, here's, here's how we address each of those. Uh, we, we deal with them individually. And that's a challenge for, uh, of a, a lot, a lot of reasons. Um, so, what we said was, rather than trying to figure it out across everything, can we look at the, the ones where we have the biggest pain right now, which is along Middlesex Road, where we've got, um, it, it's zoned in the front of Middlesex Road for business, but on the back, it's industrial. And, you know, there, there are challenges that we all deal with when, um, there are specific types of, um, developers that want to come in and, and do certain things. The recommendation is going to be that we look at addressing the, the split lots that, between business and industrial, where there's just those two. Come up with a, with how we want to address that. And then the ones where you have residential, you know, it could be, it's part R1 and part R3. It could be that it's part R3 and, uh, business. Let's not address anything relating to the residential split lots because, um, you know, there's so many different scenarios out there and people will certainly have strong feelings one way or another on that. And we didn't want to, uh, impact positive, uh, changes on the business industrial side where we have the most pain. So, we're looking at for the next annual town meeting this spring, coming up with a, a proposal on how we would address business and industrial spit, split lots, but not anything relating to residential split lots at this time.
Okay, yeah, you know, in the Master Plan Committee, uh, Beverly Woods, who led us in the Master Plan, she really looked at our zoning and, and the committee, that, uh, you know, it, it would really need to be a top priority for us to, to look at all this. Uh, and, and this particular one, uh, as Salkman Eldridge said, uh, the, the way the business and the industrial are set up, it is, as Beverly Woods said, it was kind of like strip zoning. It, it was, it was came, it was in the early eighties. Uh, nobody else, uh, in this particular region has the strip zoning. And it almost was like, you know, you know, when we're a farming community, there were certain strips of land that were for farming and everything else. And, you know, her recommendation was to really look at that in particular, uh, to see how, to see how we could improve that. And, you know, as Salkman Eldridge said, there's so many lots, especially on Middlesex that have, you know, I forget how many zones there are for industrial and how many are for commercial, but, uh, it seems like any big lot, uh, goes over two or three of those. So it would be good to, uh, address that at, at the next, uh, town meeting.
And, and Mr. Chair, if, if I may, um, I wasn't sure whether he had dropped off, but I, I see Eric Solerino is also on. Um, Eric, if you wanna, uh, Mr. Chair through you, if, uh, you wanted to weigh in on anything that I may have missed or expand upon anything or clarify anything.
Sure. Um, I think you did a good job, uh, explaining some of the challenges associated with the zip, uh, the split zone parcels. Um, the zoning review committee is trying to come up with as succinct, succinct as possible language to address the non-residential conflicts without sacrificing the commercial and retail opportunities that the split zone really appears to try to protect. So, um, and we have our work cut out for us in terms of, uh, evaluating ways to come up with a, an eloquent way to, to incorporate that language into the bylaw. Um, I am trying to put together, um, I hope it's not too overwhelming. I'm, I'm gonna see if I can put together a table that, or a spreadsheet that enables, um, people to weigh in on uses that currently require a, um, uh, special permit site plan review so that multiple board members, members of the zoning review committee, members of the planning board, members of the select board can weigh in on whether, uh, it's, I guess, common opinion that, uh, if it was only a site plan review process, if that would be sufficient. So we're trying to identify uses where site plan review provides enough oversight over something, um, in order to eliminate the special permit component. Um, so once that is, becomes available and I have a chance to review it and see how well that's working with the zoning review committee, if it's efficient enough, I'll distribute that to other boards to weigh in. As far as the sign regulations, um, Salkman Eldridge was correct about the complexity and the amount of work that would have to go into a complete overhaul of the signed bylaws. Um, but based on commitments and feedback, uh, and communications I've given to both the, I don't wanna say the business community, but mostly, as he mentioned, the education community. These are the entities within town that have been requesting most frequently and most adamantly for clarity with regards to what they can and cannot do for electronic signs that are used to inform the community with important information about their, uh, organizations. Um, so we'll be looking for language that enables them to more quickly provide information to the community without distracting, uh, animations on their signs. I think that there's a pretty easy sweet spot to, to hit there.
Hey, thank you for laying up that update. Uh, any questions, uh, from any of the board members about any of those topics? Seeing none, uh, Salkman Eldridge, anything else you, uh, wanted to add or, or Mr. Solerino, anything else you wanted to add?
No, I, thank you. Yeah, no, I think I have an idea, I have some feedback. Running through this with, with you folks, I, I think, um, Eric and I can break down some of the tables. We'll see what sort of changes people are looking and then, uh, looking to make and then we'll, uh, have a further update. But I, I just want to make sure that this board is update, it's a little bit different than some of the other boards in the committee, because I'm the only person that's there. And I certainly am, I have my opinion, but I want to make sure that, um, I'm taking into account what you folks think as well.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate the update. Um, zoning issues are very complex, uh, and, uh, always can come up a lot of, uh, discussion at, at town meetings. Uh, so the more you can keep it updated and, uh, you know, and, uh, uh, Mr. Solerino, uh, also, anything you can do to put it in a spreadsheet possibly to, to take a look at this? I, I think that just helps everybody to get a better understanding, uh, of, of this particular issue and, and, uh, you know, that, that's the challenge that we have, uh, before we go into town meeting. Uh, we have to be very clear and distinct as, as much as possible, uh, to make sure that everybody truly understands what the changes are.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, any last minute questions for Salkman Eldridge or Mr. Solerino? Okay. With that, uh, we are on a new business and we're select board reports. Uh, Salkman Winstrom, any select board report?
None this evening, thank you.
Salkman Moran?
Um, I don't have any updates this evening, thank you.
Salkman Eldridge?
Uh, the, the only thing I have been seeing lots of folks who are concerned about their energy bills and, um, it, it's that time of year and, and certainly there've been increases in prices. Um, I would like to see if there's, if there's an opportunity for, um, so electric, the electrical, electrical, uh, service, we have an aggregation program. Um, I don't know if there are any other opportunities there around natural gas or other things, um, where people are seeing some of those, uh, increases as well. And, um, I do think that residents should be aware that there are opportunities. Certainly, if you weren't enrolled, you are now enrolled in our aggregation program, um, if you, electrical only. Um, but if you, uh, opted out at some point, there are opportunities for you to negotiate, uh, with, with others, uh, to get better rates. Um, but, uh, just paying a higher bill is, you know, there, there could be opportunities there and, um, there are resources available and, and Matt, we might be able to make some of that available to residents, just to point them in the right direction. If they have questions or anything along that line. But I know we have a lot of folks that, um, it's that time of year and, you know, it's very expensive just to heat your home and, um, I know people have a lot of concerns about that. So, I don't know if we have any opportunities to make improvements there.
Yeah, well, uh, we'll ask the town manager to, to look into that and, uh, talk about that at the next meeting. Um, okay, uh, Salkman Kalabokas?
I have nothing for tonight, thank you.
And I have nothing at this point either. So, uh, can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session pursuant to exemption, exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and the chair so declare any PBA local A.C.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you for the second. Uh, roll call vote, Salkman Winstrom?
In favor.
Salkman Moran?
In favor.
Salkman Eldridge?
In favor.
Salkman Kalabokas?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. The pass is five zero zero. Thank you very much, residents, uh, for joining us tonight. Thank you very much.
Sometime in the beginning of the presentation suggests that after an X number five, making no longer use.
Yes.
So basically, the deterrent would be unless you want to go out there and pick the ice yourself, fix it because you've had X amount of warnings, right? So, you know, you have some type of part of the special permit or whatever permit say, right, you are required to do this. We'll give you X amount of warnings or X amount of fines. And then at, I'm using four because that's what you used, but I'm, whatever, right? The fourth time, you can't use this device anymore because clearly you can't use it responsibly and you're putting your neighbors in danger, right? And nobody wants to not be able to have one of these.
Right. And the fine is not gonna be imposed every time you go out there. It's more...
It's more, you know, if they're learning how to set it up and, you know, the first year is always going to be hard. And then the next year might be if you have, you know, six inches or a foot of ice instead of four inches. You know, it's a learning process to get it. So the fines are there for, like, if you're out there every single, like, every couple of days and they ain't doing nothing. That's what the fines are for. And it's more just to get you to say, you know, to comply.
Do we have anybody that we've spoken to now and they, they don't want to change their behavior?
Yeah.
Is there, is there more than one?
Yes.
So I do think we should have council find a way to, you know, whether you can put a lien on the property or, you know, in some way, help ensure that, because ultimately we need the behavior to be changed. And I don't think that Mr. Derby is going to be able to go there and just rip the thing out of the ground and say, or out of the water and say, I know, you can't use that anymore.
No more.
Yeah, so, so I mean, I think we need to make sure that we have those things covered. Because we run into this in a variety of different ways.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I do think that we should have some discussion with the public, right?
Yes.
To, because there may be things that we haven't considered, right? You've done a great job of outlining a lot of the possibilities and having council look at it. But, you know, I think it's important to make sure that people have an opportunity to, to understand. Because I think it's great that we're not preventing it completely. But I totally agree that ultimately ICE around here during this time of the year, where we've got fluctuations and then even, you know, when you get, I'm very surprised that there are people out there in certain times in February and March and you sit there and say, what are you doing? But, you know, I think whatever we can do to not limit our folks that are on the water and have permanent docks and want to be able to enjoy that, we're not limiting that. We're just making sure that it's done with the safety of others and also making sure that their neighbors are not impacted by their activities. So my thing would be, let's look at enforcement and making sure that that's, it's not going to be perfect. And I know it's one of those things. I think a lot of it is just having the ability to say, well, it's in the bylaws, you are, you are flouting the town bylaws and you are in violation and there's a fine. And, you know, if they still snub their nose, then we need to have some sort of mechanism. But, and then, you know, also make sure that we've got an opportunity to have people. Tell us about things that we might not have thought about.
Yes.
And the lake associations are on board with this too. They've seen, you know, because they, you know, because again, they.
They get the calls.
Yes. And they get the calls from the irate neighbors too, you know.
No, I'm in agreement with what was said by the two select board members. Except maybe I think a lien in the house might be a little excessive, but I don't think I quite want to go that far. But everything else I'm good with. And we have a couple of action items, you know, we'll look at town council again. We'll make sure we have a public meeting and then keep us up to date. And we'll put a, put something in the tentative bylaw that we can discuss later on.
And is the board amenable to the conservation commission holding the public hearing? Or did this board not hold it? Do you have a preference?
I, I'm good with the conservation commission holding the public hearing.
Yeah, I would prefer them to hold it because they're going to know a lot more about the issues and the items. We'll have dialogue in advance. And then there will, obviously, there'll be other open discussion before it goes to town meeting anyway. But I think it's, it's important for the, the folks that are, have more expertise on the issues and dealing with those sorts of things on a regular basis. I'm more than willing to listen in, but I don't know that I can add much value to the discussion.
Great. Anything else? I guess we'll board. Okay, I don't think there's any.
I think no action needed.
No action. We just wanted to get a good update and we did. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
And you got to be an alternate also. So someday it'll be trivia question. What was the first town manager decision?
It was Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution support of an act relative to tax deeds, H dot three zero five three of the hundred ninety second session. Mr. Town Manager.
Great. So I think this board has seen my email and likely read the memo. So I don't want to go through the entire, read it verbatim here. But this issue has been getting a lot of news across the country because there are a number of states now, twelve in total, if I have that correct, that haven't made this change. So the majority of states in the United States have already made a change or never had this practice in place where if a municipality forecloses on a property, the excess revenue, the excess essentially value of that home would be returned to the homeowner. In Massachusetts and a number of other states, if a property gets foreclosed on, the sort of mortgagee or in this case, the town, if it's a tax title case, basically retains the rights to the property in any equity in it, even if it far exceeds the amount of taxes that are due. Rather than trying to tackle this issue as Tingsboro alone, we're in good hands with a number of other communities that have signed on with the resolution as well as a number of state reps who have already filed and supported several times legislation that would address this issue. So specifically in the hundred ninety second session of the legislature, there was House Bill three zero five three and after all of the tax deeds, that would amend section fifty three of chapter sixty. So that if there's a tax taking, if there's excess revenue, again, after all of your fees, legal costs and taxes are paid, it would be returned to the homeowner, which, as we'll recall, the board's fiscal year twenty three, goal number twelve, was to look into this issue at the beginning of the year. When we set the goal, we weren't sure how we were going to be able to address it. I think it was in November, December when we started to reach out to council and they were going to look into it. But I get the sense right away that handling something like this on the local level might be tricky. My recommendation at this point would be to do what the city of Greenfield did and pass a resolution in support of this bill and/or whatever the bill is re-titled to when it's refiled in the next session.
Via Zoom tonight, I'm Ron Cohane, Chair of the Select Board. Since it's been a while since we've done a Zoom meeting, I want to go over how we're going to conduct this meeting via Zoom as we have in the past. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted remotely consistent with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into law by then Governor Baker on July sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. Public participation is only required during a public hearing, though the chair may utilize my discretion to provide an avenue for public comment during other items on the meeting agenda. Please note that we are utilizing Zoom's webinar platform and only meeting participants are visible during the meeting. If attendees are permitted to speak, they will be heard but not seen when unmuted by the host. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live and some attendees are participating. All attendees are participating via video conference. All supporting materials that have been provided to members and are, they are also available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. So if and when an opportunity for the public comment, I will make such a statement. Members of the public wishing to make a comment should raise their hand to notify the meeting host that you wish to be heard. Please ensure it's named so that we may notify you when it is your turn to speak. When called on, the host will unmute you, permit you to speak. You will be muted. When done, you are calling in on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And when appropriate, you will be unmuted and asked to speak. Finally, all votes will be conducted by a roll call vote. And that's it for the, for the script. Now let's go into, you know, the, first of all, I should do board introductions as if we were sitting at the table from my far left, starting with Jackie.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokas.
Good evening, Hillary Winestram, although I'm out of order.
Good evening, Matt Hanson, Town Manager.
Good evening, Colin Wazal, Assistant Town Manager.
Okay, thank you for the introductions. First, on the agenda is meeting minutes. Could I have a motion for the January ninth meeting minutes?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the January ninth, twenty twenty two, regular session meeting minutes.
Second.
And the motion is second. Roll call vote. Selectwoman Winstrom.
Obstain.
Okay, now Selectman Moran. Selectwoman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas, sorry about that.
In favor.
So that passes four zero one. Now can I have a motion for the executive session meeting minutes?
I move that the Board of Selectmen release the executive session meeting minutes as redacted for December eleventh, twenty seventeen, December sixth, twenty twenty one, May twenty third, twenty twenty two, August one, twenty twenty two, January sixth, twenty twenty, March fourteenth, twenty twenty two, June thirteen, twenty twenty two, August twenty two, twenty twenty two, August seventeen, twenty twenty, April eleven, twenty twenty two, July eleven, twenty twenty two, November seven, twenty twenty two.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call vote. Selectwoman Winstrom.
In favor.
Selectwoman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
That passes five zero zero. Thank you very much. Citizens of business time, are there any residents or business owners that would like to address the board tonight?
There is no one with their hand up.
Okay, seeing none or hearing none, I could say. Next is the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items to note this evening. On Thursday, January twelfth, the State Ethics Commission launched a new online training program. So this new program, along with the summaries of the Conflict of Interest Law, will now be hosted on the commission's new learning management system, which will help municipalities track who's completed the training. It should make it a little bit easier for board and committee members to do their, their training and receive the paperwork as well. Tingboro Middle School Project is projecting an anticipated deficit in the approximate two million range at this point. But the project has not utilized any of its contingency fund yet. The project will have more cost uncertainty in the next two to three months as expenses and bid results for the first thirty two percent of the project will be awarded in March. And at that time, the town owner, project manager, Left Field, will prepare an updated cost estimate and present it to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee as well as the middle school building committee at that time. On January eighteenth, the town manager participated in the second of three library strategic planning meetings and the committee is currently working to identify and define a community vision statement. Also on January eighteenth, the Open Space Committee and Conservation Commission held a public meeting to discuss the formation of a Tingsboro Land Trust. They're looking to hold hold a second meeting in March. They do have enough volunteers currently to officially form the land trust, but they want to see if they can gather a few more before making that, you know, first big step. So they're going to hold one more meeting. They're going to advertise a neighbor to neighbor and again, on social media and a few other avenues to try and get more, some more input and volunteers. And I do want to note in your packet and also posted online is the library's quarterly report. So they have a few highlights in here. I'm not going to read through all of these. You'll see their first strategic planning meeting, that they've relaunched their monthly newsletter. Good to note, they've held sixty programs in the last three months and had over a thousand attendees. And then you'll see some of their goals here for the next quarter, which involve working to wrap up the strategic plan, hiring the assistant director, which they just completed last week, finalizing their budget submission and a few other items here. So I won't go through all of them, but it's in the board's packet and residents can do that online. And then.
Any questions for the town manager? Just go forth and just ask the question. Seeing none. Mr. Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. On January eleventh, we opened bids for the Madeline Terrace Drainage Improvements Project. The lowest bid came in at ninety one thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars from JP Woodall. Town Manager Hanson has awarded a contract to them for the work. We received thirteen qualified bids this round and Woodall Construction has done one other drainage project in Tingsboro to the satisfaction of the engineering department. You may remember that we opened bids originally in the fall, but the pricing was higher than we expected and the lowest bid fell through. So we went back out to bid. This one was lower and it's also roughly twenty thousand dollars under budget. So we expect that the project will commence in late March. Also, on the eleventh, we opened bids for the Littlefield Library Project. This is a project that involves a forty thousand dollar grant from Mass Historic and a forty thousand dollar match from CPC. There were two contracts. The first is for the slate roof replacement on the rear side of the building. That one was awarded by Mr. Hanson to Almar LLC for seventy seven thousand dollars. We're currently reviewing bids for the door portion of the project. As this is a state partially funded grant, they have to review the qualifications of all the firms that we award a contract to. And the low bidder for the door portion of the project couldn't show enough work on historic buildings to get that approval from the state. So we're reviewing the qualifications of the second lowest bidder. We were able to secure an additional six thousand dollars from the Mass Historic Commission because the door wasn't originally included in our grant application, but the state had extra funding this year. So that was something that they wanted us to move forward with. And we expect the work for that project will commence in March and must be completed by June first. It will be supervised by Building Conservation Associates, which manage the front part of the Littlefield Library. Also in procurement, we're working with the planning board to solicit competitive RFPs for peer review services to allow the town to ensure that it's receiving competitive rates and that we have a standard contract with terms that are favorable to the town. RFP documents will be available on January thirtieth and due by ten AM on February twenty seventh. The proposals will be reviewed by the planning department and the planning board and a contract will be awarded for work to commence on July first. The planning board currently uses KNA and is happy with them, but we haven't competitively procured their services in a few years. So this is one way to make sure that we get the best value for the town.
Any questions for our Assistant Town Manager? Seeing none. Let's go into new business. Request for host community agreement for marijuana delivery on Vroom. Mr. Assistant Town Manager, I believe you're going to take this one.
Absolutely. I'm currently promoting Michael and Tara from Bada Vroom and Bada Bloom. I'll probably mix those two up as we go. Including your packet is a draft host community agreement that has been reviewed by town council and the applicant. Just prior to the meeting, it was mentioned that we likely want to find language that's amenable to the town as well as to the applicants relative to the impact fee. As this board knows, the impact fee laws changed. We have sent correspondents to the legislature regarding those changes. And so it was suggested before the meeting that we work with our council and with the applicants to find some sort of language that would address if the law changed back to the way it was when we first granted HEAs. But as this document stands now, it matches the current laws. So if the board is amenable to granting this, we would look for there to be contingent on adding some language amenable to town council and the applicants. This is the first that they're hearing of it, so I'll, I'll speak with them more in detail about it tomorrow. But they have a current HEA for forty four Old Ting Road under Bada Bloom. They are now looking to do. They are now looking to do delivery and including your packet was also their business plan. And they did submit a very detailed security plan, which has been reviewed by the Police Department. Chief Howe noted that they had no additional concerns. At this point, it's probably appropriate for me to let Tara and Michael introduce themselves to the board and tell them a little bit more about what they're looking to do.
Thank you, Colin. Hi, everyone. My name is Tara Hopper. I'm a general counsel for Bada Bloom INC, which has a cultivation and product manufacturing at forty four Old Ting Road. We're looking to expand with a delivery operator license at the same building so we can essentially just deliver products for people would sign on, do orders through the internet, through e-commerce platform. And then we could have all of those orders. We would have vault and then we would just, whoever ordered it, we would deliver it directly to their home. Michael, this is the CEO and of Bada Bloom. I'll let him speak.
Hi, my name is Michael Marinaro. I'm the CEO of Bada Bloom and also Bada Vroom. And as Tara said, we are just seeking a delivery operator license out of our same location that we currently hold those provisional licenses for. You know, we have designed this building for the security for delivery as well. It is very secure. You know, in between where our vault will be and also where our storage for our bands will be that will be leaving the facility. And we, we really appreciate you guys having us tonight and we'd like to know if the board has any additional questions about our operation.
As in, just so you know, before I started with Bada Bloom, I was working for some very large operators throughout the country. I've done many different inspections with the Cannabis Control Commission for various places in Massachusetts and across the country. So if you have any questions about the specifics, I'm happy to answer them for you and I very much value your time and thank you for listening to us this evening.
Oh, thank you. Just to add a couple of comments. So when you got the initial host agreement for cultivation, you did mention that you were probably going to come back with this request. So now we're here at this point. And just to double and triple check, Colin or Matt, you know, this meets our land use and the marijuana legislation or marijuana bylaws that we passed at town meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around and see if anybody has any particular questions. Selectwoman Winestram?
Thank you. So where it's an online platform and I would assume you're, you mentioned doing, you know, you would order and payment. How does that work considering a lot of credit card companies won't allow the processing of cannabis funds on a credit card?
Right. Well, they'd be pre-ordered is very much how they do, like when they had to do curbside, you pay once you get there, but you put in your driver's license and you put in your information and your driver's license has to match the address as to where you're going. That's in the regulation. So once you get there, then you would have, it would go through like a
A card.
Yeah, a card machine like Dutchie.
Yeah, I believe there actually is platforms now as well that you can use your debit card right in the e-commerce site as well. So you can use either or with some of the newer platforms that they have.
Yeah, frankly, we've met with a lot of different vendors who do that. We're going to have to hire someone to do that piece because that's outside my, my realm, but as far as the standard operating procedures and the meeting, the requirements with the Cannabis Control Commission, we know that the way that we're doing this meets that criteria. Otherwise, we would not get approved by the commission when they inspect us.